Good evening and welcome. I am Darlene Allen from Marquette County League of Women Voters. The forums this evening... Sorry about that, folks. The forums this evening will feature candidates running in the general election on Tuesday, November 7th for the Marquette Board of Light and Power and for the Marquette City Commission. The League of Women Voters of Marquette County is sponsoring this forum. For over 100 years, the League of Women Voters has engaged and educated voters through candidate forums, voter registration drives, and voter guides. The League is a nonpartisan political organization that was established to encourage citizen participation in government. We never support or oppose any political party or candidate. This evening, we offer you an opportunity to become acquainted with candidates and their views in order to promote an informed vote on Election Day. We request that the members of the audience remain respectful of the candidates and the forum format. Please turn off any cell phones and refrain from taking photographs or recording during the forum. No campaign clothing, buttons, or signage are permitted during the forum. And to provide the maximum time to hear from the candidates, we request that you hold your applause until the conclusion of each of the forums. As you know, this forum is being livestreamed and recorded to the League YouTube channel, and you can find a link for that on our Facebook page and also on our website. Marquette West Rotary Club helped fund this candidate forum, and also the staff of the Kaufman Auditorium have provided assistance and support to make this evening possible. So, thank you all very much for coming, and the forum will now begin. Good evening. A little stage management there. I'm Joe Foley. I'm a League member and moderator for this evening. Could I ask if the people in the back can hear me all right? Great, thank you. Opening statement, one minute for each question, and have a two-minute closing statement. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine the order in which they will respond. Each candidate will have the opportunity to respond to each of the questions asked. Our timekeeper will hold up a 15-second warning sign, gentlemen, you can see there, and then a stop sign at the end of one minute. I will then move the question to the next candidate. The candidates are asked to respond only to the questions asked by the moderator. Active debate with other candidates is not allowed. Views expressed or candidate statements provided in this forum are those of the candidates, and the League takes no responsibility for them. We will begin this forum featuring the candidates running for the Marquette Board of Light and Power. There are four candidates on the ballot for two seats. Three candidates are with us tonight: Jerry Erby, Dave Campana, and John Sonderreger. The fourth candidate, Douglas McMahon, is not able to participate due to his work schedule, and I will be reading a statement from him a little later. The candidate, the two candidates receiving the most votes will become board members. The Board of Light and Power administers the Marquette Public Electrical Utility under the supervision of the Marquette City Commissioners. The utility produces and transmits electricity to around 16,000 citizens of Marquette and all our parts of nine townships of Marquette County. We will start this forum with a short video that will introduce us to this utility that is so critical to the city and county.
We are the Marquette Board of Light and Power, and we are proud to be part of this community, generating power and keeping the lights on since 1889. Although our mission is simple, provide safe, reliable, affordable energy for the Marquette community, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. As a nonprofit municipal electric provider, we are governed by a five-member publicly-elected board, and our customers are our shareholders and neighbors. We utilize a variety of generating assets, some which have been producing since the 1920s, with certain upgrades, of course. Let's take a look at how we keep the lights on. The M L P was the first in the Upper Peninsula to have a community-owned solar garden, which means the solar panels in this garden are owned by individuals in the community. Anyone located in our service territory who purchases a panel in the solar garden will receive credits on their bill proportional to how many solar panels they purchase and how much the array produces. This is a great way for individuals to be able to support solar energy without having to install an entire solar array on their own home. Forestville Hydro, or Number Two Plant. Construction on Hydro Plant Number Two began in 1919 and was completed in September of 1920. A few short years later, as demand for electricity continued to grow, the city decided to install a second generating unit at Hydro Plant Number Two, which was completed in 1923. Together, these two units can produce up to 3.2 megawatts. An interesting point about our Forestville Hydro is that the water from the dam is carried on the entire way by a wooden penstock. The wooden penstock walls are about two and a half inches thick and made from California redwood. Forest Park Hydro, or Number Three Plant. Continuing to keep up with demand, the city of Marquette decided to install another hydroelectric generating facility, this one being located near Powder Mill Road. Completed in November of 1924, enabled to produce up to 0.6 megawatts. As you may have noticed, this unit produces slightly less than our Forestville units. That is because the elevation from the dam to the hydro unit is considerably smaller. The combustion turbine, or C T. Right down the road from Number Three Plant is the Diesel Combustion Turbine. This unit can produce 24 megawatts and can be up and running at full capacity within five to 10 minutes. This makes it a great emergency backup unit, as the unit is quite expensive to run. This unit, along with the Marquette Energy Center, are Black Star capable, which means these units do not need an outside power source to be able to be brought online. The Marquette Energy Center, completed construction in 2016, housing three boards on a dual-fuel reciprocating internal combustion engines, placed into service to serve Marquette and the nine surrounding townships. The Marquette Energy Center is capable of producing 51 megawatts and can run on either natural gas or fuel oil and is responsible for carrying the majority of our customers' energy demands. The Marquette Board of Light and Power is connected to the larger energy market and is both a contributor and a recipient, and most of it has to do with timing. That basically means when power is inexpensive, typically overnight, we do not run our units and we purchase from the grid. And when power is expensive to purchase, typically during the day, also known as peak, we use our assets to generate our own electricity. This method of utilization allows us to keep operating costs as low as possible, which in turn contributes to our ability to keep rates stable for those that we serve. The future of how we consume electricity is dynamic, and we continue to see changes in both generation and energy optimization. We continue to work with our partner organizations and neighboring utilities to better prepare for the future. From all of us here at the Marquette Board of Light and Power, we are proud to be your municipal electric provider.
Many thanks to the Board of Light and Power who provided this interesting video to give us a look at this important utility and what it does for us. So, we will now like to welcome our candidates for the Marquette Board of Light and Power. This will be Jerry Erby, Dave Campana, and John Sonderreger. You can welcome them now. As determined by law, we will start the opening statements with candidate Erby. Mr. Erby, you have the floor for one minute.
I'd like to first start it off by thanking the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this initiative to bring the voters to the candidates. I think it's very important that the candidates are in front of the voters and voting responsibly for the representatives. Again, I'm running for the Board of Light and Power. I have been high life always... In my life, I've always been involved in service. I have been a school year senior United States Air Force and lived through life in Marquette. I have been involved in the community from the time I actually came here with my family and my wife and her three daughters. And it's important that people get involved in their local governments and their local services. And this is why I'm looking for a year ago for another term on the Board of Light and Power.
Thank you. Candidate Campana, you now have the floor for one minute.
Also, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for staging this forum. I do feel it's important for the community to hear us. I am running for the B L P because I feel right now that the B L P is a well-run utility. It's got excellent staff, excellent management. My hope is that I can contribute to it in some way as a concerned citizen, a resident citizen, to keep it functioning as well as it is. The background that I bring is I've been a business owner for almost 20 years. I've been for 40 years working budgets, management, personnel, expense control, and I hope that I can contribute to the success of the B L P. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Sonderreger, you have the floor for one minute.
Yes, thank you for providing this forum for the voters and for the candidates. I'm running for reelection to the Board of Light and Power. I feel my background well suits me for the role. I have 30 years' experience in business and budgeting, currently retired CPA, hold by undergraduate in accounting from Northern Michigan University and a master's in business administration with a concentration in information systems from the University of Minnesota. So, I have experience with budgets and business planning, and so I feel this is the first experience for doing Board of Light and Power.
Thank you. Thank you. Technical difficulties? We'll have it first. So, that concludes the opening statements. We will now start the question portion of the forum, I hope we will. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. So, candidate Campana, you will have the first question. This is the question. What do you think are the biggest challenges facing the B L P in the near future?
I would think to continue to operate as well as they are, to continue to operate so they provide good, clean, safe, dependable power to the community. There is, of course, the push for more green energy, which think that they have to be aware, they have to try to incorporate it into their system when they can. But the important thing is they continue to provide 100% power 100% of the time and to keep, just to keep the lines running. Thank you.
Candidate Sonderreger, you have the same question?
Thank you, yes. I feel that the changing regulatory environment is one of the most clear challenges for any electric utility. Our, the planning horizon for utilities such as the Board of Light and Power is in the decades. We began planning for the current energy center, the reciprocating engines that you saw in the, in the video 20 years ago. And so, when we aren't sure of such things as requirements for renewables, it's a difficult challenge and one that the staff and board are keen to focus upon. Thank you.
Mr. Erby, you have the same question?
Could you repeat that question?
Sure. What do you think are the biggest challenges facing the Board of Light and Power in the near future?
I think the number one challenge is affordable product to burn in the reciprocated engines is natural gas. I did a study when I was on the board about natural gas with downstate at one of the meetings that we go to, and that was an important study because it showed that we have an abundance of natural gas in the state of Michigan. In fact, we're one of the top states in this country. But we have to have access to it. They put in another service line, zipco, into the plant just so we have a continual form of natural gas coming in. We burn natural gas in our energy system, our M E C, we call it, our good energy center, but we also buy natural, our bioelectricity over the grid when the, the cost of power is more susceptible to doing that. So, it makes our, our units there last longer, and we've got definitely an affordable product that we can make sure that our citizens have.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Sonderreger. This is the question. Michigan and Marquette's goals of carbon neutrality are 27 years away. What more can the board do now to help achieve that goal?
Certainly, one of the key things that the board has been working on and continue to work on is the ability to optimize our use of renewable energy sources. So, certainly, one of the big advantages of the energy that we are currently producing is that it's instant on, can power up in five minutes, and so when wind is available or solar is available, we can easily switch back and forth. So, I think continuing to focus on the maximum flexibility is what we can continue to do with the utility.
Thank you. And the same question to candidate Erby?
Repeat that, please.
Sure. Michigan and Marquette's goals of carbon neutrality are 27 years away. What more can the board do now to help achieve that goal?
Well, we have been doing it. They mentioned in the video about solar power, and we're the first new, we did have solar powered gardens, what they call it. And we need to expand, I believe, in solar power. We need to look at green energy. Maybe we're not the best location for a turbine power generator, but we need to balance that with our M E C, our utility that we have here. And our staff has been doing that beautifully through the last few years, how they, they monitor every day the costs of buying it on the grid or producing it ourselves. And that's a continual process that we, we rely upon our executive director and his staff to provide to us as a board.
Thank you. The question now goes to candidate Campana.
You have to give credit to the B L P for the motions that they've already made. I mean, they've gotten away from burning coal and now they're burning natural gas. They put in the solar panel farm, and they do have some hydro-generated power. For the future, I think it's, you know, they have to look at alternative sources of energy, natural sources, green sources. They need to, you know, look at the studies, they have to determine what they can do, if they can incorporate it into their process. But it's, it's important that they be responsible for their actions, if they implement it, but they should be constantly looking at if they can implement it into their plans. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with candidate Erby. Question is, what concerns or excites you about the increasing electrification of our homes and vehicles?
The concerns, I don't believe are relative up here. We, we go with the market. We, you know, with the electric cars coming on, we're making moves to provide those electrical substations where they can come and, you know, charge up their vehicles as they're coming through the area. The, you know, as you, as you move forward to other forms of services that we provide, it's important to understand that you have to have a financial, good financial background to do that, and we do have that. We have a, a budget that supports capital improvements. So, we've got the, the ingenuity with our engineers and our executive director. The object of the board is to support them. They make the decisions, they run the operation from day to day. So, I'll pass it on to the next question.
Candidate Campana, you have the same question?
I can repeat it.
Sure. What concerns or excites you about the increasing electrification of our homes and vehicles?
This is a coming thing, and you're going to see more of it, and it's going to be demanded by consumers. So, we have to be prepared for what it takes to provide this energy for them. It's a little bit more difficult in our remote area, but it's, I think that if the B L P is paying attention to potential studies that, you know, justify what they can do, that's the most they can do. They can't back away from it, they just have to look at it and be prepared to provide it as possible when necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Sonderreger?
Yes, thank you. The biggest concern I would have is this, as you mentioned, 27 years to net neutrality of carbon is a political position, but it's not necessarily a technological position. So, it's, and this is part of the political environment that the world is always experiences, is that there are goals, and are they achievable? And so, that certainly is always a concern, and the B L P has always been on the forefront of being green and environmentally conscious, even when we were using the coal fire. But the excitement certainly has to be our ability for technology and such things as time-of-use billing. So, I think that there's a lot to be excited about in the utility.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Campana. And this is the last question, we'll have statements after this. What long-term future uses do you foresee for the former Shire Steam Plant site? Do you think this has anything to do with the Board of Light and Power?
Long-term use of the Shire Steam Plant? It's got to remain a green area. It has to, I don't think there's going to be any building on it. The citizens of the city don't want to see anything developed there. I don't think that the B L P has made a decision as to what they're going to do there. I'm not privy to their, you know, plans, but I would hope that it would be a, whatever they develop would be something beneficial to the city. Thank you.
Actually, it goes to Mr. Candidate Sonderreger next?
Yes, I would encourage anyone with a position on use at the Shire Steam Plant to come to our meetings. We do discuss these and we add it on the agenda. There certainly is a large footprint at this site that will continue to be used for utility. There's a large substation there, there's switching equipment, so it continues to be an industrial area, but there is a large area that is available for open and public use, and we are currently working on plans for that. And ultimately, this will be a civic decision, and it's up to the city and the electorate. Thank you.
Same question to candidate Erby?
When that plant came down, there was a, a move to, you know, develop it. Well, it was decided at that point, let's, let's just give it some time, let's let it set. You'll notice periodically, you'll see a big, big pile of limestone that's brought in by a ship and that goes to the iron ore industry. So, we, we have a use for that. The other side of it, we basically said, let's give it five years, let's see what happens in five years, you know, let's, let's let it calm down, let's enjoy the view and decide at that point what is to be done with it. And I, I can almost say that, you know, it's not going to be a housing development or anything like that. I think it's got to be used for public need, and, but it takes some time to do that. We're not rushing into it, it's just to calm it down.
Thank you. We've come to the last minutes of the forum for the Marquette Board of Light and Power. Each candidate now has two minutes for a closing statement. Candidate Sonderreger will be first for closing statement.
Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having the forum and each of you for attending. I think having informed electric is one of the keys to a successful democracy. It's also a key, having people on the board with the experience to understand and work with all the issues at hand with no particular special agenda. And so, I have spent my life in finance and budgeting and running businesses, and so I feel my background and experience well suit me, and I would appreciate your vote coming this November. Thank you.
Next to candidate Erby?
I think we have to understand that we own our own utility. We're very fortunate, our founding fathers through the years have developed this utility which supports the community just out of the city of Marquette. You go out in the township, the one side of the road is the city of Marquette utility, and the other side is a competitor. Well, on our side, the rates are a lot lower than on the other side of the road. So, we're very fortunate that we, we took, we took the coal out of the, the process. We reduced our emissions by 90% when we took that coal ban out. You know, so we got a clean utility there and it's supporting our needs in our community. If there's businesses that come in, we have the capability of supplying energy for those businesses or fat or whatever. So, like, we're in a good position as far as the B L P. We have a good 10-year plan as far as, you know, paying our budget, and I had the pleasure of being in the industry of financial planning, so that helps regarding that when I look at a budget, I know what, know what it means. And when I was in the city, we always had a balanced budget. We have this money carryover on our cash reserve. We have a very good cash reserve in that utility. The public needs to be, the public has to know that that utility is very, very solid. Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters and, and that's it.
Thanks. Candidate Campana, your closing statement, please.
Again, a thank you to the League of Women Voters for staging this and to the people who came. I would like to be on the B L P board because I think the B L P, as I said before, is right now a very good organization, they're very capable in what they're doing. I would like to serve just to be a Marquette community resident on the board to keep, to keep that eye out and to represent the people of the community. I have a, my background again is in business and operating a store, and I've done that for four, almost 40 years, and dealing with budgets, personnel, et cetera. I think that I, hopefully, I could contribute to the success of the B L P, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will now read a statement from the fourth candidate, Doug McMahon, in his words. My name is Doug McMahon. I am unable to attend tonight due to my work schedule. I am currently employed at Northern Michigan University in the Ripley Heating Plant as an operator. I retired from the Marquette Board of Light and Power in February of this year after almost 20 years of service. I have been a firefighter for the past 34 years, starting on Scandia West Branch Fire Department. I have been a firefighter for the past thirty-four years, starting on Scandia West Branch Fire Department and most recently with Chocolat Fire Department. I am also on the Marquette County Central Dispatch Board. I reside in Marquette City with my spouse and two children. I am running for the Marquette Board of Light and Power because past and present employees and BLP customers have asked me to do so. Being a long-term employee, I have seen several changes made. Some are good and some were not so good. What I can bring is insight into the day-to-day operations of the BLP. I can offer reasons for why things are done, and I also have the knowledge to offer alternative options that may be cost-effective to all before changes are made. I have invested a lot of my adult lifetime working for the BLP and feel it is a great place and would love the opportunity to continue to work with them in this capacity. Thank you for your time, Doug McMahon. This concludes the forum for the Marquette Board of Light and Power. Thank you, candidates, for your participation. We're going to take a little longer break than we thought. We have very succinct speakers here. That was great. So, the, the, the forum for the City Commission is planned to start at seven. So, we will start at least by seven, maybe a little earlier if everybody is here and ready. Audience members have the opportunity now to submit still, to submit a question for the candidates for the next forum. League members have index cards and pencils available in the lobby, or you may have already gotten some. And please write down your questions. When you have them, wave them around, and one of our members will take them and bring them to the questions meters. And also, please, visit our information table in the lobby to learn more about the Marquette League. Thank you very much. We'll see you in twenty-five minutes or so. Thanks. Good evening and welcome back, and welcome to anyone who wasn't with us earlier. I'm Joel Foley, League member and forum moderator. This next forum features the candidates running for the Marquette City Commission. There will be six candidates on the ballot for three open seats. However, one candidate, Corey Swanson, has withdrawn, but his name will still appear on the ballot, so don't vote for him. Just, the ballots were printed before he withdrew, so that's why. So, the three candidates receiving the most votes will become Marquette City Commissioners. The five candidates contending for the open seats are Jessica Hamley, Sarah Witch Reynolds, Cody Mayer, Paul Schlegel, and Margaret Brum. The Marquette City Commissioners serve three-year terms and may not serve more than two consecutive terms in office. The Commission represents the citizens of Marquette. They are charged with governing the city, they pass ordinances and establish budgets and policies affecting Marquette and its residents. The City Commission has the power to hire the city manager and city attorney and to appoint citizens to serve on numerous advisory boards and commissions. The forum format will be the same as with the previous forum. The questions, however, for this forum have been submitted previously by Marquette City voters and by the audience. And the audience is free to submit more questions during the forum. If you don't have an index card and a pencil, you can get one in the lobby. Just wave it in the air and one of our pages will pick it up for you. The questions may be combined or refined for clarity or to avoid redundancy, and we'll use as many questions as time allows. I remind the candidates that they are asked to respond only to the questions asked by the moderator. Active debate with other candidates is not allowed. Views expressed or candidate statements provided in this forum are those of the candidates, and the League takes no responsibility for them. Please welcome this evening's candidates. Jessica Hamley, Sarah Witch Reynolds, I hope that's right, Cody Mayer, Paul Schlegel, and Margaret Brum. As determined by law, we will begin with opening statements, starting with candidate Hamley. Hamley, I apologize. Okay, you have the floor for one minute.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank the League of Women voters for hosting this forum. Voting is one of the most important things we do as citizens in this country, and the League does an amazing job at not only empowering, but encouraging and educating the voters in the area and across the country. My name is Jessica Hamley. I'm currently running for reelection to the Marquette City Commission as I'm finishing out my first three-year term. I chose to run for Marquette City Commission because I love the area of Marquette. I want to make this a place where my son can choose to live when he grows up. And I know, I worry that with the way the city is growing, it would be hard. It was hard for me to choose to live here when I grew, or when I left and when I moved here. So, I want to make sure that he has an easier time and more job opportunities. Thank you.
Candidate Witch Reynolds, you now have the floor for one minute.
I would also like to thank the League of Women voters for putting on this event. I've participated in these events in the past and as well as watched them, and I really appreciate all you guys do. As somebody who was a City Commissioner previously for six years and interned out, I've been off the Commission for three years. As to, to Commissioner Hamley, I love the city I live in. The reason I continue to live here and have for the past twenty years is wanting to make this place better and for my twelve-year-old daughter to grow and be proud of where she lives. Being somebody who graduated from Northern and continued to live here is because of what Marquette is and what Marquette can be. And I think as a Commissioner, again, I will have that ability to help it grow and continue to be the Marquette it is.
Thank you. I'm going to pause for a second for our E V people. We're getting persistent whining and ringing. Could we have some suggestions about that? Is anybody there?
Uh, yeah. Hello, everyone. I'm trying to tune it out. The, the moderators are sitting next to one of the speakers. So, hold the mic very close to your mouth so I have to, don't have to put it up very much. Sorry.
Okay, we will try. So, candidate Mayer, Ma- Mayor, I'm sorry, you have an opening statement now.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cody Mayer. I am also running for reelection to the Marquette City Commission. I've been a Commissioner for three years, and I really want to continue to work and strive to continue the work that we've been doing to make Marquette a great place to, to live and raise a family and to work here. And I, I want my daughter to have the same opportunity that I had in this beautiful community, and I want others to have that same opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Schlegel, you now have one minute for your statement.
Thank you. Thank you, League of Women voters, for this opportunity. It's a great, a great option for everybody to get to know candidates. I've been a resident here for a little over thirty years, moving up from monotony. I've been lucky enough to meet a local or another, I guess, transplant, but I would call ourselves a local now. But she's been in the hospital here for thirty-plus years. And we've just always wanted to give back as much as we can to our community, to be a part of the process and make sure that Marquette, again, you know, sticks with the history that it's so proud of and responsibly grows as we move into the future. So, the big part for my, my involvement here is because I know that the, the process is so important to be adhered to and to move us into the future responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Brum, you now have a minute for your statement.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. I want to thank the League of Women voters. In my way of introduction, there were eleven Brum kids in town when I was growing up. So, answering the standard question first, Babo Brum was my dad. Oki Brum was my uncle. Oki Brum was on the City Commission. My grandfather Ike Brum was on the City Commission. He was also mayor at one time, so there's a family history of service to the community. I'm here tonight as a candidate for the City Commission. I'm concerned about the community, City Master Plan that will be determined in the next year to two years because that will determine the development of the city for the next ten years. I'm also concerned about the fiscal status of the city. And I also want to push heavily for having the agendas for all of the meetings available online so people can know what's going on in the various meetings and committees. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. That concludes the opening statements. We will now proceed with the question segment. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. We will begin with candidate Witch Reynolds. The question is, what particular part of city government interests you the most and why?
Well, what interests me the most is when I was formerly a City Commissioner, the budgeting portion of the city politics was the most interesting because going through each and every line item, determining which roads, infrastructure, going on those particular visits to determine how we did those things was of particular interest, but as well as being able to see what the other, what we have to do to make our city work and how we can make it fiscally work all together. I loved that part, and I feel like when I was on the Commission, it was what I was best at, is analyzing each thing and seeing how we can make still our parks exist, still make our roads happen, and still make our facilities work. And so, that is my favorite part and the part that I find of most interest.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mayer.
Thank you. I would definitely say my personal favorite and what I'm most passionate about is economic development. In my eyes, everything really stems from a healthy economy, and that's, that's really just where my passion and focus has always been. You know, I've worked tirelessly over the last three years with a lot of our local regional economic developer partners, and I have a very intention of continuing to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Schlegel.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What particular part of city government interests you the most and why?
It's a really, really hard question because there's so many layers to the onion, as they say, how the city gets things done. I'd have to say that I'm probably most interested in the planning process. And the master plan was mentioned already, but if you go back and you think about everything from, you know, fifty to a hundred years ago and where we've come from and how that's formed what Marquette has turned into today, it's kind of like holding your hand and saying, here's what we need to pay attention to as we move into the future. And that planning process is so pragmatic that I just really feel that it's something that we need to pay very close attention to as we move forward, along with, you know, the multitude of different things that, you know, we have access to. But that's, that's something that's very much interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, question to candidate Brum.
I'm an engineer by training, and my most involvement with the city has been with the public utilities. I served several years on the wastewater advisory board, and I'm currently a board member of the Board of Light and Power. And I'm proud and happy to say that Marquette has an excellent public utility system and that the grid is up and running and working to the betterment of the people. And this just doesn't happen. The city has invested in these utilities and done a very good job of keeping us up to date and up to speed with the rest of the public utilities within the state. And that unfortunately is not the case for all smaller towns. And so, that's something that Marquette can be very proud of. Plus, it's good for development. And I also am very much interested in making sure that people know what the city is going to be discussing at the meetings and all of the board meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Hamley.
Thank you. I think one of the, one of the things that interests me most about working in city government is just talking to the residents and getting to know them. I find the biggest part of our job as City Commissioners is informing our residents of the decisions that are before us, why we're making them, and what we're doing going forward. It's one of the hardest things because there's a lot of misinformation in the day of the twenty-four-hour news cycle with internet and Facebook. A lot of things can get skewed. So, I find that one of the most important things that we can do, and one of the biggest things we can do as Commissioners, is really get out the information there and make sure that everyone knows exactly what's happening. I think it's one of the best things. And the other part is, when I came on the Commission, I assumed that we were the ones making all the decisions, and I was wrong. The city staff really does an amazing job of bringing everything to us and doing the work behind it. So, I think that one of the most important parts is simply working with city staff to know what we're looking at better.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Mayer. The question is, what can the City Commission realistically do in the next three to six years to increase affordable housing in Marquette?
Thank you. You know, that, that's a really tough question. You know, we've been working over the last three years a lot on trying to address the housing problems we're having. We have potentially about five hundred new housing units that are going to be coming online here within the next three to six years, I'd say. But as far as what I would consider affordable or is actually affordable from a development standpoint are two very different things. And with the labor shortages we're having and the cost of construction increasing on top of the cost of lending increasing, it's becoming harder and harder, but there are still avenues I think we're exploring to try to solve that problem. And it really, at this point, the more housing stock we have, the more the overall housing market will start to finally equalize. Thank you.
Thank you. Question, same question goes to candidate Schlegel.
Boy, you know, the housing study that was done a couple of years ago was a, a great starting point, but this is no Marquette-specific problem. This is a regional, it's world, it's nationwide. We need to start a conversation with the City of Marquette, the townships, everybody that's around us. We need to all get on the same page and address this issue as a unit, I think, because there's really not a, a really good answer for Marquette. We're, we're landlocked by the townships, by the lake. We don't have a lot of extra land here. There are areas right around us that have much more suitable areas that we could build some, you know, larger, higher-density-type developments. And I really feel that, you know, if we're going to make a dent in this, we have to do it as a unit as, you know, with more, more people involved throughout the county and our townships and do it together because otherwise, we're just kind of doing it for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Brum.
I echo what the other candidates have said, which is it is a problem not just in the city of Marquette but in Marquette County and in the Upper Peninsula as well. Affordable housing ranks as the number-one problem in municipalities across the country. I've lately been intrigued by the idea of a local motel opening its rooms for the winter to have people stay there on a long-term lease. And I believe that could be explored, not just within the city, but within the townships as well, trying to encourage motels that normally shut for the winter to see if you could keep them open and generate enough income. And have, I appreciate it's not a permanent solution, but it is doable. And also, I would encourage that the city would provide a grant process for that people who are living in older homes could maintain their life in their homes by having them get grants for repair work that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Hamley.
Thank you. I, everyone that has spoken so far has said the truth. Right now, this is a problem across the nation, and we need to be working with our other communities in order to find responsible solutions. Some of the solutions that we can work on in the city are working on zoning right now. We can really reduce restrictions on zoning to allow more duplexes and triplexes. One of the main problems that we have is the amount of parking that is required to have certain duplexes and triplexes does not exist in the areas that have the space or the larger houses that could do this. So, we'd have to find a way to work through that problem with parking in the winter in Marquette. It ends up becoming an issue because on-street parking isn't always an option. So, there are options to work on, but the biggest part is that we all have to work together. The City of Marquette is not a developer, nor does, is it a landlord. So, we have to make sure we're working with these people and we're to make it easier for housing to come to Marquette.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Witch Reynolds.
I also echo, in particular, to candidate Schlegel's comments with other communities. I've been thinking about this every time I've been asked this question. And I remember when I was first on the Commission, we used to have these things where we would work with other communities. We would have these monthly meetings where we'd be with every township of what issues are you having, what are you looking at? And I think going back to those kind of things where we can work together, even when it comes to housing or snow plowing or whatever machinery might be needed. comes to housing or snow plowing or whatever machinery might be needed, it really was helpful to see what we could do all together. So I do believe that that is what we need to do, is reach out to other communities, see what we can do. Also to Commissioner Hanley's comments is that we have a denser, like to allow for denser housing, that's something I've thought about for a long time and also parking. I know a lot of people that it's, you could have more housing if there was allowable parking for those scenarios and that would also be a way to fix that problem in a short, in a small way.
Thank you. This could be defined something as a follow-on question, but people want to know, and this goes to candidate Schlegel first, how do you define affordable housing?
Wow. You know, I've, I've been in the construction side of things and I've, I'm currently in people's homes every day and affordable housing is, is a, almost needs to be reinvented for a different term because it's so almost impossible to define with building costs and things nowadays. Affordable housing, you know, I think that if I was going to say, if I was going to label anything affordable housing, it's got to be high-density, multi-level type buildings that are either single units or multifamily units that people can somehow get some help, perhaps from the state for purchasing. It's just such a hard, hard one to nail down. I don't know if it's, that's, we need about thirty minutes for each of us to wrap our head around this one. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Brown.
Affordable housing goes into the standard rental form I used to fill out when I lived elsewhere, you need to know my take-home pay and what one quarter of my take-home pay was because that was considered what I was allowed to pay for rent. And so it just as a top, off the top of my head, your payment for your housing shouldn't be more than one quarter of your take-home pay. And that depends on how much you make in terms of what is affordable for you. And this is one of those things where, as the economy has changed from manufacturing and union jobs with income that was considerably above minimum wage, affordable housing has gone down to the point where you have many people who have to share housing with other people to come up with the monthly rent payment. So I'm standing by, it's about one quarter of your take-home income. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Hanley.
Thank you. Affordable housing means a lot to a different people. To me, I can look at you right now and tell you if I hadn't bought my house eight years in the city, eight years ago in the city, I would not still be living in the city of Marquette. I wouldn't be running for this office. I couldn't afford to live here. I can see, I know that the way that it's mostly defined is that you should be within eighty, if you're around the median income in Marquette, which is around fifty thousand in Marquette County, you should be right around one thousand to twelve hundred dollars a month in rents. But I know that finding an apartment for that in Marquette even right now is very difficult. So I think affordable housing though means something different for everyone. It can't, it does not necessarily mean just that with the cost of everything rising right now, it's hard to afford even that thousand dollars that you should be able to afford. So I think, well, it means different to everyone, but probably around twelve hundred dollars a month.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mitch Reynolds.
That is an absolutely impossible question to answer as far as what is affordable housing because it's a different thing for each and every person. But when I was thinking about this and talking about this with somebody recently, in order to make housing more affordable is that we need more units and then obviously that would break down the amount, but, and with that, to that amount would be around two thousand additional units in the city of Marquette that we would need and that to be affordable to candidate Brown's point of one quarter of a normal person's income. And if you're talking about fifty thousand's the average income, that tells you what would be affordable. How to put that into play, I'm not sure, but we did this previously, changing, allowing for denser housing and all of those things. It's how to make that happen, but what is affordable, it's different to each and every person.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I, I think that going off, you know, HUD standards is really the, the best way to go about this, especially if we're talking about housing development, there's public subsidies involved of any kind, which is thirty percent of the area median income, which for Marquette is about forty-four thousand for a household of three. And when you do the math on that, it comes out to about eleven hundred dollar, eleven hundred dollars a month. So that's what I would say it should be, but much to Jessica Hanley's point, that's not something you're really seeing anymore. And one of the biggest things we can do for that is, again, trying to increase the amount of housing stock we have to help address that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Schlegel. The question is...
We just started the last one.
Oh, we did. Never mind.
Yes, thank you, sorry.
I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, yeah. We'll start with candidate Brown. Okay, ready? What are the three most important issues facing Marquette?
The three most important issues facing Marquette are number one, budget, number two, budget, and number three, budget. Number one, budget, is that when I first got involved in city politics roughly in the year twenty thousand, two, twenty eighteen, our general fund, which is our savings fund, was over eleven million dollars. As of the last budget, it is down below six million dollars. And that has to do with spending patterns for the city for the last seven years. As anyone knows, you cannot spend more money than you're bringing in. So the first thing we have to do is get spending under control. The second issue on the budget is dividing the budget into necessities versus wants. And we've had discussions recently about fire trucks falling apart versus public art projects, and that is an ongoing discussion. And the third session is, there's discussion of a city income tax, which I have experienced with and I'm not in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Hanley.
Thank you.
And you might, might have to get closer to your likes.
Am I good?
I do.
All right, thank you. So the three most important issues that we're facing in the city, as candidate Brown has stated, budget is obviously number one. We are not below six million. It will be just around eight million after this year, I would just like to clarify that. But we are doing all, we are taking the steps and measures to, to ensure that five years from now, the city is in a much better standing. When I came onto the commission, we were in a financial downturn and we needed to find ways to work towards it. We've been lucky with our city manager and our chief financial officer to find ways to move forward. Affordable housing, of course, is another issue that is a problem for the city. We have a lack of housing stock and a lack of money and a lack of good-paying jobs, so that will always be a problem. And the third thing that I think is the biggest would be our environment. We have to make sure that we protect the natural landscape that we have for future generations to come, and if we don't, we will be hurting. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mitch Reynolds.
I believe the three biggest things are both our infrastructure, budget, housing, which we've all discussed those things and, but I think the important part with those three things is communication with the community. The thing is that I find, at least when I was on the commission or when we are trying to have the public be informed of what's going on, is that we, we tried our best to make sure everybody knows what's happening with the budget, the infrastructure and housing, but I think we need to try harder to get that information out of when meetings are and all that kind of stuff so that maybe we get more public involvement so that those three things can actually be addressed by people in the community. And that's what I consistently see is questions around those things and how to get our community more connected with those.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll start things off with the budget here. You know, shortly after Jessica Hanley and I both joined the commission, we, we had a new city manager and new CFO and they brought into our attention that the city was close to about three, running a three million dollar deficit. And since then, we're only running a couple hundred thousand dollar deficit, and that's including with wage increases as well, just cost of doing everything increases across the board. So we really have been, you know, saving money wherever we can as well as increasing revenues where we can, and it's, we're in a lot better position than we were. Next, I'm going to talk about economic opportunity and trying to retain some of the, our youth and talent that we have as well as our working-class families. We have a great opportunity to do that by diversifying outside of tourism and focusing on areas of tech and guerrilla creation. And the third thing I would say is housing, which we already kind of covered a little bit.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Schlegel.
Yeah, I'm going to rewind and hit play again because it's really, we're hitting all the right spots. Fiscal responsibility, you know, there, there's going to be a time when we're going to want to bond again and we're going to need to bond, but we have to do it responsibly. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of money that's going to be coming back into the system for the general fund as some of our brownfield projects mature, but we can't bank on that right now. We have to be responsible all the time. The infrastructure is something that I really hammer all the time because we have to be prepared to, with climate change issues and things along those lines, we have to make sure that we're up to snuff with our, our infrastructure. Housing obviously is, you know, we can't beat this dead horse enough tonight, but we have to really take a solid look at where and how we're going to afford people a place to stay because, you know, we, we need workforce housing and we need all different types of levels of, of housing issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Hanley. There's a bit of a prologue to it. Demographic breakdown of the Marquette Master Plan Community Engagement Workshop showed that participants were disproportionately wealthier than the average Marquette resident. Here's the question. How can the commission ensure that planning includes the needs and desires of all Marquette citizens?
All right. I can understand why it probably was disproportionate. The people that have the time to go to these meetings, to be a part of them, to be involved in them, and the people that are invited to them tend to be a different thing. I do not consider myself in that thing, in that class or disproportionately wealthy compared to the average citizen. So I think that most of the commission would probably agree that they also don't put themselves in that category, which means that the decisions that come to us and the things that come through the master planning process will be vetted by people that don't necessarily meet those standards. I do believe that the process does allow to ensure that everyone is, is taken into consideration, but it's also, it's not just one step. There's many steps that come forth in this process, so there'll be a lot of eyes that see it and ways to make sure that we're including everyone.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Mitch Reynolds.
It's to Commissioner Hanley's comments. I, I agree and I think that that is true of the current commission and I feel that most of you probably feel that you are not part of the wealthier population and agree with to that. But I think that the way that we could involve more Marquette citizens is making sure we ensure that, making it more public as far as to, like our current affordable housing, making sure we provide information to the Pine Ridge Apartments, the Lake Superior Village, other places around, that this meeting is happening or this survey is out there for this piece of information so we can have them participate, so we know where they're at, because that's where, we know where there's affordable housing issues, we know that it's lower income, and giving, getting that information to those groups of people could get back to us or, including DHS, HS, or other citizens would be the way that I think that we could potentially involve lower-income people in that kind of survey.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I, in a not-too-distant past here, I actually used to live at Lake Superior Village and I can understand the fact that a lot of residents that don't have as much wealth and maybe don't have the luxury to be able to go to all these forums and events that we have. And it really, what it boils down to is just, we have to put in the effort and make the time to go and meet with different demographics in our community and try to make sure their voice is heard. And it's an interesting bit of data that we have there, and I think that we definitely need to do a better job on it though.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Schlegel.
Yeah, I'm at the end of the road here. Can you give me one more reread, please?
Okay. The demographic breakdown of the Marquette Master Plan Community Engagement Workshop showed that participants were disproportionately wealthier than the average Marquette resident. How can the commission ensure that planning includes the needs and desires of all Marquette citizens?
Thank you. Well, I think the city's done a really good job of kind of addressing this, especially in the last year and a half, maybe a year, two years. And we're talking about the, the, the Worth Lake Power properties that, you know, is going to be reused. We've got other areas, the other power plant that's going to end up being reused for stuff, but they're going out and they're getting folk input and giving everybody these opportunities, you know, multiple meetings, things along those lines. Because the master plan already has done such a good job with, with making sure that everybody has lake shore access, that everybody has public parks to go to, and that we set aside, you know, three hundred-plus acres of, of recreational property in the, in the Hartwood area. So, you know, there's, the city's trying and they're getting better at it, but, you know, we can always make sure that we're trying our utmost to assume it's even better. Thank you. Excuse me, thank you.
Same question to candidate Brown.
I had the opportunity to participate in many of the in-person forums on the community master plan and I saw a variety of different people from different backgrounds involved. Going forward, my understanding of how you get people's attention is you put a cost value, cost figure associated with a decision. One of the things the community master plan has done so far is ask a whole bunch of really good questions about what people want. And I've been there where people put their stickies underneath what they want, but they have yet to put the cost of what they want as associated with that request. So when there's no cost associated with it, the wants are very high. I think as the city clarifies what the cost of each want would be, I actually think that's when you're going to get more involvement from people in all aspects, because as soon as they know what it's going to cost to get certain things, they're going to make their involvement more, more known. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Hanley. No, candidate Mitch Reynolds. I've got it right there, sorry. Okay. Expanded development has increased impermeable surfaces, leading to more storm drain runoff. What measures can the city commission take to protect the lake from this increased runoff?
That's a good question. At least from my experience, which I'm not an expert in storm water, storm drains, but with that being said, being on the commission, I had time of learning a lot about this in terms of what we can do to make sure, and a lot of that is environmental testing, to make sure we continue to test near our shores of Lake Superior, like how we do with Cliff's Dow, to make sure that that environmental pollutions aren't getting into our, our water or groundwater and continuing to make sure that we check our water sources where there is potential environmental issues and that's, yeah, pretty much just continue to do appropriate testing.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, this is a, a question I, you know, personally have some experience with, you know, I, I'm a member of the National Guard and I, I was sent over to Hoven in 2018 when the storms over there just devastated that city. And as far as the city of Marquette goes, we've learned from that experience, we've actually updated our emergency response plans for this. We have a lot more proactive ways of going about making sure that the water keeps flowing so this doesn't happen. And we've also started utilizing equipment differently to help keep that kind of scenario from happening. But, thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Schlegel.
Thanks. I was on the commission back when we had that big rain event and one of the, one of the best pieces, if you can have a shining star during that time, of news was that Marquette's infrastructure was up to the task at that time. We're very fortunate because, again, planning has, has allowed us to stay up to date on that and to make sure that when we, when we're thinking about new community or new developments in the community, new housing developments and stuff, that our infrastructure's up to the task pulling on to, or being able to supply what we need to have supplied. Green space is a big issue and that's huge and when it comes into the planning side of things. And how do we get more green space? Well, maybe we, since we're such a walkable, bikeable community and that's what we're hanging our hat on, we, we don't require as many parking spots, which will... we don't require as many parking spots, which will allow us to have more area for seepage and water runoff and take care of a lot of those issues, at least help it. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Brum.
Storm drain runoff is kind of right in my wheelhouse. As a chemical engineer, talking about what happens with water once it hits the ground is part of the class. Two issues, number one, in new parking lot construction, the city could mandate what's called permeable parking lots where they're not paved over, or certain segments are allowed to be paved over, but the rest are made out of gravel and other materials that allow for drainage from the parking lot directly into the groundwater, so you don't have the buildup of water coming off of the parking lot. And parking lot water tends to be the most contaminated because of the fluids that leak from cars and other vehicles. So I would encourage the city to put that into the land development code. In addition, as a part of the wastewater advisory board, I looked into the issue of putting nets on our storm drains. They have these all across the Australian coast and they prevent large amounts of contaminants from leaving the storm drains and entering the lake. And I would encourage the city to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Hanley now.
Thank you. I am not an expert in this either, but what we do have is a lot of experts on our city staff. Our city engineering department and our city wastewater treatment departments are both phenomenal and they are staffed by amazing employees who work on these problems regularly. What we can do as a city is to continue to update our infrastructure and allow, make sure that we allow for this in the future, that if we have more builds, we are prepared for this. And also just testing more at the lakeside. Our wastewater treatment plant does a lot of testing as it is of all of our different waters in all the different stages. And I think if we increase that and continue to monitor it and then if we have to, be proactive with it's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Mayor. Okay, good. Another somewhat long one. Many residents have complained about the congestion on sidewalks and the multi-use bike path. Beyond hoping that residents will just be courteous, what suggestions do you have to make the community streets and sidewalks safer for all users?
Okay, so this is something that has come up in our master plan discussions, especially with the more and more prevalent use of, you know, EV transportation and just the amount of outdoor recreation this community has. And really what it's gonna come down to is we need, it needs to be incorporated into the planning for the city as far as how we move forward with this and we're gonna have to do something realistically with the bike path and make it so it's more accessible for a variety of different users. So we don't have someone driving on an EV bike at twenty miles per hour, riding by someone pushing a baby on a stroller scenario, which unfortunately happens more often than people think, but, thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Schlegel.
Thank you. This is really difficult because, you know, like, as the mayor said here, with the EV bikes and all this stuff, it's, it's a really sensitive topic. You know, we wanna be bikeable, we wanna be walkable, we wanna have access to the bike path, which is all over the lake shore. But we have to start with ourselves. We have to, really, ourselves and even the retailers, I think, are, have to have some audacity in this because they have to say, hey, you know, here's, maybe put some rules together that say, if you're, if you're going to use this bike in this, these areas, please abide by these, these rules. And we've got a parking and, what is it, parking advisory board, parking, I'm trying to look at the word, driving, I think it is, advisory board, and they're working on this right now too. And I'm sure that they're giving recommendations to the, to the city. But it really, I think it's gonna come down to basic education and respect for others.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Brum.
Candidate Brum has two proposals for shared use of the vice paths and other pathways. Number one, there'd be a mandatory single-file-only travel pathway. This will stop the idea of people walking abreast or biking abreast, or I've seen the cross-country skiers come down in a flying wedge of six of them, two by two, that would clear the path of anything. So a mandatory single-file pathway would give more space to people coming and going. And then regardless of who is traveling on what device, and I know the one-wheel people are trying to get access to the pathways right now, there has to be a mandatory speed limit on those pathways. I have seen bicyclists pedal-driven going by too fast. I've seen people running going by too fast. And I've seen, like I said, the cross-country skiers had to be going about twenty-five miles an hour in a very congested area. So those are my two suggestions, a single-file only and a speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Hanley.
Thank you. I'd like to say that there's a lot we can do, but there's probably not. Right now, a lot more people are getting out. E-bikes are not only on our bike paths, but on our sidewalks a lot of times because there's younger kids driving them and they don't wanna be on the roads, which makes it even more dangerous because our sidewalks are already quite narrow. I think the most we can do is educate people and really try and put up more signage, trying to do things to protect them. But I've been on the bike path with my son, walking and been sped by, by e-bikes and it's frightening. I don't like to go on it anymore. So I understand the fear and the concerns. I'm just not quite certain what we can do to stop that at this point.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mitch Reynolds.
That's absolutely correct. There isn't, like, the right answer. Like, you can't say, let's do this, this, and this without full education. I remember, and I'm sure a lot of you do, when we made Third Street into having a bike path on it and how difficult that was to get motorists, bicyclists, everybody behind the plan and make sure it worked for everybody. And it was education, it was forums, it was pamphlets, it was all sorts of things to make it work for everybody. Because it's, we can say we're gonna be, ah, you have to do this, you have to do this. When are people gonna listen unless we educate them appropriately? And that's how we made it work in Third Street and I think that's how we can make it work with e-bikes. I understand the e-bike fascination and it's because fifteen-year-old children can drive them, so why would they not want to? But if we continue to educate and make sure that we are even doing it in our schools, that might help alleviate some of the issues with the younger people.
Thank you. We'll start the next, yes, the next question with candidate Schlegel. What are your views on the planning concept of the fifteen-minute city where daily necessities and services can be easily reached by a fifteen-minute walk or bike ride from any point in the city?
Oh man, one minute? When I was on the planning commission for six years, we spent three years doing the, the master plan revision. It was, it was, it was awful. And it was so, we had to go through and do it meticulously. But one of the things that we brought into our, our master plan was the idea of nodes and then different sort of micro areas that would allow us to have, you know, a smaller grocery store-type component or, or service-type related businesses in a, in an area that might have been formerly just more residential. So the planning process is really, it's fascinating and I'll tell you, our planners are really good. I learned so much from them and I really think that this is something that's already being incorporated, I'm sure in this next revision, to some, to some extent, but it's going to be continuously revisited and changed as time goes on. So I think that there's certainly room for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Brum.
Growing up in Marquette, we pretty much had a fifteen-minute city and the fact I could walk from one end of Magnetic Street to the other in about fifteen minutes. And, I mean, I had to walk to the high school every day. We also had neighborhood grocery stores. We had grocery stores on Third Street, we had grocery stores on Front Street downtown and it wasn't very difficult to reach a grocery store. There were also many of what we call mom-and-pop shops in the area. And what's happened now is that the majority of the grocery stores are in the townships and that's a problem to get to and no way can you do it in fifteen minutes, but you can't consolidate shopping trips. And I know that for, Marktran has allowed Northern students to travel for free. I would encourage a deal between the city and Marktran to allow other types of free travel. But the gist of it is, until we get the neighborhoods back to where we have local services, the fifteen-minute city is, is a thing of the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Hanley.
Thank you. The idea of, the concept of a fifteen-minute city would be wonderful and in theory it would be great if we could implement it right now. I think it's not probable in the city of Marquette at this point, trying to make it to where this is something. So I think what we really should be focusing on is instead of walkability and bikeability, is increasing our public transit so that we can allow for safe and effective travel across the city in a timely manner that is conducive to what we actually have available to us in the city.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mitch Reynolds.
Well, I'd like to say that I've heard of the term fifteen-minute city. So as all the other candidates are answering this question, I have not my brain behind what it actually is and I understand what that means. But that being said, I don't, unless we change our master plan, our density, all the things that we intend to do with our affordable housing, that kind of vision cannot come to fruition without those things. Because we could have a small bodega with a large dense population or things of that nature, but not the way the, the city is currently created and how it exists. It is not possible, at least in my viewpoint of a fifteen-minute city, without more public transit, transportation or things of that nature or changing the dynamics of what our city looks like.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, the, the idea of the fifteen-minute city sounds fantastic. I think we could all agree that it would be a really nice thing if we could pull that off. But realistically, that's, that's one of those things where policymakers and politicians like ourselves, like we come up with these great sounding ideas, but reality, people's behaviors and choices would make that not realistically work. You know, there was, used to be you could go into almost any neighborhood, there's a small store there you could go to, or, you know, a corner store and those all went out of business or started closing down because even the locals wouldn't spend the extra money to go and support that little business. And at this point, we have a lot of larger options. If you're, live near, you know, Third Street or downtown, you could probably justify being in that fifteen-minute city-like scenario, but there are other areas in our community that it's just not gonna be feasible anytime in the near future.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Brum. Question is, what should the city commission do to encourage and support new business owners in the city of Marquette?
The city commission should encourage new business owners by providing not a brownfield tax rebate, but a understanding that for every new business that comes in and will certify that they've hired at least, I wanna say five to ten local people at above minimum wage, that there would be a rebate of their property taxes for the first two years that they did that. In other words, if they could come in and say they were hiring five to ten local people at above minimum wage, the city would give them a rebate on property taxes regardless of the status of their business, whether it was a brownfield or not. This would encourage local businesses, maybe some even mom-and-pop stores, to come back to neighborhoods where they have been excluded from. And I realize that there's no precedent for this, but we have to do more than just use brownfield money to attract large developers. We have to use the power of the purse to bring back the small businesses which employ so many people. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Hanley.
Thank you. I think one of the biggest things the city can do to encourage and support business owners is to ensure that we have the proper infrastructure in place for them to thrive. Bringing in broadband internet, high-speed, or high-speed internet, having different options for them for what they can do so that if a tech business chooses to come here, they have the capabilities to support their business in that way. So I think that instead of looking for ways to maybe make it more affordable for them to have their business here, making ways for it to be a more doable prospect. These bigger companies that have work from home right now is something that we're going to have and be leaning into. It's going to be a lot of our population soon. And I think ensuring that all areas of our city have the same connectivity is a good way to do that.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mitch Reynolds.
That is a good question. To encourage new business owners. And to look at it from both candidate Brum's point and to candidate Hanley's point, they're both correct in both ways. We are gonna have all sorts of different businesses coming into the city. Right now, it's all tech stuff that's stuck by supporting Innovate Marquette, supporting anything that we do as far as, as a commission, supporting businesses coming in. It's gonna continue to be ones that you don't see, like, not storefronts, not that kind of thing. So making sure that the infrastructure is there for them to be behind the scenes, to make sure that they can come here and they have internet, they have all the things they need. They make sure our electricity stays on because our Border Lake Power is awesome. And all of those things that come together is just continuing to support what we already have and make sure it continues to work for those kind of businesses. And then to candidate Brum's point, that, that is something that I would look at and think about as a commissioner and see what that looks like for our city.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mayor.
Yeah, so I, I think a really big aspect of this really does boil down to that the infrastructure that we have here is in more so in the technology realm, like broadband and partnering with groups like the Board Lake Power, for example, and some more regional economic development organizations to secure state public funding to help facilitate that kind of transition. But it also comes down to if we are continuing to support groups like the DDA, which are downtown development authority as well as Innovate Marquette, to both have more traditional stores thriving as well as bringing in those tech organizations and making sure they have the resources they need and keeping those good paying jobs here.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Schlegel.
Thanks. Well, we've got a, we've got a few things that are already in the, in the works here, you know. We've got Northern Initiatives, we've got Innovate, we've got the very aggressive ME-DC action that's been happening the last year. So those are, those are some exciting options that we have in place right now. A regional think tank is something where somebody could come in and they could have a facility that they could use and bring an idea from concept to fruition. And then hopefully, because it's a regional idea, it makes sense to utilize our shorelines because we've got a port, we've got different, very sought-after assets that could make some more industrial, better-paying jobs in this area. So I really feel that, and I know that that, there's a think tank that's in the, in the process of being put together right now, but it's early stages. So, you know, this is definitely a topic that's in the works right now and I think that we're gonna see some serious action in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question first goes to candidate Hanley. And a little bit of a long preloading, pre-tailwind again. Household batteries are a hazardous component of the waste trade, but also a source of essential minerals. Currently, volunteers collect batteries for recycling in cooperation with the Solid Waste Authority. What can the city do to divert batteries into recycling and recovery?
As a city, I think we could make it a little bit simpler for recycling to happen. Right now, we have different, there's batteries in a lot of our different electronics and we do a yearly or maybe semi-anual version of collecting these batteries. I think if we have consistent drop-off sites for batteries that are more accessible to the average citizen, it might be the easiest way to encourage these batteries to be recycled.
Okay. Same question to candidate Mitch Reynolds.
I echo candidate Hanley and then to that, we, we do that already as a city, like, at our police station with, like, throats. We also have a facility at our public workstation for certain things to be collected there. So making more locations for that kind of thing at the police station potentially, at our public works, maybe communicate with Northern or our schools, that would be a good potential thing. So, again, working with other groups and our, the things we already have going on and places we already have collections would be the way to make it easier for people to, if they're already going to that location, they're going to the VLD, they're going to the public works, they're setting their kid to school, you could send them on while you're doing that other thing?
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, having a dedicated drop-off point for those would certainly help a lot and would make it a lot easier for educating the public on where that is and it would just be a normal, consistent thing we could do. But if we also had a, you know, a tech company in here in Marquette that actually could recycle or use those right here in Marquette, that would also make the process a lot easier.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Schlegel.
I agree with everything that's been said. It's about the access, right? We're all willing to do our part to recycle glass and take a little bit of extra steps to go and recycle our to go and recycle our glass nowadays, which has been wildly successful in my opinion. I hope that people are taking advantage of that, so we need to have access to drop-toms. My big concern is how do you, how do you do it safely? You know, the batteries are several different types and sizes, and it's just something that, you know, you can't just put a container there and have people drop them in there without knowing that they're a hundred percent safe. So that's something that would really weigh on my shoulders if we were going to do something like that, but I certainly think that it's something that can be addressed in the future here.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Brahm.
I've recently become associated with Northern as an adjunct faculty member, so I'm spending more time on campus. If you walk the outer ring of the Superior Dome, they have multiple battery recycling stations already in place, and as you know, the dome is open to the public whenever there's not a Northern event, there's no charge for it. They do ask that you put the battery in the bucket without a bag or anything around it, and I've seen them being actively used. I also know of at least one location in town, and that's Ace Hardware out on the highway, that has the same type of battery recycling. Both of the Dome recycling station and Ace Hardware focus on household batteries, the single triple A, double A, B's and C's. What is needed in town is a place for the lithium batteries, which are so dangerous in terms of, when you get something with a lithium battery, it's labeled on the package that they can't fly with and things like that. But yeah, the dome at Ace Hardware already has battery recycling for free. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next question starts with candidate Mitch Reynolds. How should pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicle use be balanced on press guide?
That's a good question. I remember this being a hotly contended issue when I was on the commission, but I think it is balance, like with everything. We have to make sure that we, and we still have those, we have pedestrian time where you can only walk, the hours make time, you can only drive. And I understand, a lot of the argument I've heard before is that a lot of people want to drive all the time because not everybody has the access to walk or like, or any of those things. But the important part is to look at the greater whole of protecting our environment to make sure it's not cars all the time, because if we continue to have all the car usage, it continues to erode. So making sure we balance that act between certain pedestrian hours, vehicle hours, I think that that's what we have to continue to do to make sure we protect the jewel of the city, but also allow for people to enjoy it in its natural state.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, this issue, at least in its current state, really is a balancing act. You know, I understand that a lot of people want to ride their bikes or want to walk around, but the island, but a lot of residents can't do that, and their only way to get around the island is being able to drive around it. So it really is a balancing act to make it accessible for everybody in the way they want to use it. You know, maybe the next time we go to redo the road there, there's potential, we could try to increase the width of it and add something like a specific bike lane or a walk lane to it, and maybe we could make it easier for people to access at that point, but I don't foresee that happening within the next year or two.
Same question to candidate Schlegel.
Yeah, back in the early 2000s, I spent six years on Pye Park, and it's the same story, same issues. We actually, as part of the American Area Junior Chamber of Commerce, built a pathway from the end of the Loop Road all the way around up to the, to the overlook. And then we had to stop there because people didn't want us going into the woods and taking down trees or harming anything that wasn't already open. And that path is still in use today. It's kind of hard to see, it's not quite as obvious as it was back when we put the original granite down. But my point is, is that we've got a pretty good balance going on right now, and I think that people need to be understanding of others. We have a chariature crowd that values that island as much as the kids that want to go out and jump off black rocks. So we have to be respectful of everybody and allow access for everybody regardless of walking, biking, or vehicles.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Brahm.
Candidate Brahm has one word to this answer we need to share, S-H-A-R-E. Candidate Brahm remembers in the mid 1970s when the first walking-only hours were established, and it was two hours a day, six days a week, and there was some days that were even more than that, and everyone kind of nodded their head and said, "Yeah, that makes sense. There's times for people to just go around." What's put pressure on the city now is there's a certain very vocal segment of the city that has said they don't want any vehicles around the island Loop Road at any time, that it should become entirely pedestrian-based, and I don't foresee that being allowed by the people of Marquette for the same reason. We always do, there's no access unless you have mobility, plus people have paid money for memorial benches to people, and if it's not open to driving, they can't see the memorial bench. So we need to remember, we've been sharing the roads successfully since the 1970s, and anything that gets in the way of that will not be workable. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Hanley.
I think my answer is that I do believe it is balanced right now, and I think we should continue this system that we are using. We have walking hours and biking hours, we have driving hours. I think they are very well done at this point, and I don't see any reason to change them anytime in the future.
Thank you. This will be the last question for the forum, and the question goes to candidate Mayor first. Yes? Okay. The Downtown Development Agency is hoping to expand the Tax Increment Financing, or T I F, to the Third Street businesses. Why would you either support or oppose this move?
This has been something we've been in talks with for, honestly, I feel like since I've been on the commission, and they are now really looking to pursue this. You know, initially, I think one of our biggest hesitations with pursuing this kind of avenue was the city, the city needs the funding. But we actually have some projections right now that even five years out, it still really wouldn't be affecting the city of Marquette's budget. The reason why we want to support this, though, is currently, all the downtown districts, their TIF capture that goes into the DDA is, that gets used on Third Street. Third Street doesn't pay back into the DDA because they're not part of this capture. So to the downtown businesses, it's kind of unfair for them, but the DDA, that mechanism will allow greater investment in that area, and I think it's something we should at least genuinely consider.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Schlegel.
Thanks. I'm not the know yet, so I guess I'm going to have a hard time answering this one as far as the information that these guys are privy to right now. I think I would support this from the sounds of, from my previous experience on the commission, but I need more facts. I know that it's important to fund the DDA, they do a fabulous job in my opinion, but the idea is, you know, my biggest concern is that, you know, what would the impact be on the general fund, if any? And until I get that kind of information, I can't make any other further comment. So, thank you.
Thank you. The same question to candidate Brahm.
Candidate Brahm once invited city manager Karen Kovacs to walk one block of Third Street with her to show the variety and intensity of businesses, and also to show the amount of cigarette butts that were in that one block, and also to show the lack of city garbage cans and city accoutrements in the sense that there is one block of Third Street that has a flat sidewalk. And city manager Kovacs was amazed to find the variety, like in the campus pharmacy mall, the sheer amount of small businesses there supporting five, six, seven, eight, nine employees. But I'm in favor of the TIF for Third Street. I do believe that right now, the DDA is more focused on downtown than it is on Third Street, and I think if you walk every block of Third Street, you will find just a significant amount of business there without the same amount of services, including trash pickup, including leveling those sidewalks, and that's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Hanley.
Thank you. This TIF was originally brought before us a year and a half ago, and the entire commission seemed to be very hesitant because at the time, we were looking at a budget that was not balanced, and we couldn't look at giving away any more of the city's tax dollars. It was recently brought before us again, and we were given a wonderful presentation about why it's necessary. And one of the biggest parts is, to Commissioner Mayor's point, to Mayor Mayor's point, that we had, we have a Third Street being funded by all the downtown businesses on Washington Front, Verica, that are there, and they're paying for the same services. Third Street is still being serviced by the DDA. They do all of the sidewalk cleanup for snow removal, they do all the signage, they take care of the plants in the areas, put up flags. So in order to make it fair for the entire downtown district, since they are a part of it, they should also be included in the TIF capture.
Thank you. Same question to candidate Mitch Reynolds.
I'm more in the camp of candidate Schlegel that I don't necessarily have enough information. I do know a bit about TIF in the Third Street District and all the things that go with that, and exactly to what the commissioner Hanley just said, but without having the information of how the businesses on Washington and the businesses on Third Street, me personally not being involved in that process, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying yes or no without knowing how each of those two groups feel, because I feel like that's something we need to make sure is we're, like, I would be communicating directly with those people so I could make the right decision, but on the initial information, it sounds like, that sounds like a reasonable request.
Thank you. We have come to the final minutes of the Marquette City Commission Candidate Forum. Each of our candidates will have two minutes to make a closing statement. We will start the closing statements with candidate Schlegel.
Thank you. You know, I mentioned earlier, I've been up here for, I've been in Marquette as a resident for about thirty-three years, and every year, I look and I try and say, you know, where are we headed? And twenty of these years, I've always been, you know, I've either been in part of an advisory role position, or an appointed role, or an elected role, because I want to be involved in the process. I want to see how the sausage is made, I want to be able to understand what's going on and why it's going on, and I want to help with my experiences that I've gained, I want to help drive the community in what we feel is the best direction for all of us. You know, I'm incredibly passionate about the community as a whole, otherwise I wouldn't be here, and I applaud you guys for being here, thank you, because you obviously care enough to be, you know, part of this whole thing. But, you know, over those years, I have just gained such a respect for the process that it takes to run a community like this, something that is absolutely a jewel of the Midwest, where people say, "You're from Marquette, how lucky are you?" And some people compare us to other communities downstate, that we're not. We protect our lake shore, we respect it, we give people access, we make sure that we have recreational access, all of these things that those other communities don't, and I'm really proud of that. And that's because the people before me, before us, had the vision and foresight to be able to say, "Hey, you know, this is what's important, not just for me, but for everybody." And when we're talking about, you know, what we're going to do in the future, this is it, these are the people that care, right now for this election at least, and, you know, I'd love your vote, and I really appreciate the fact that, you know, you're allowing me to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Brahm, you now have the floor for two minutes.
I hope everybody who can vote in the city of Marquette will vote for me for a seat on the Marquette City Commission. The reason I'm running for a seat on the Marquette City Commission is we're faced with challenges that I cannot influence sufficiently with three minutes of public comment at the beginning of each meeting and three minutes of public comment at the end of each meeting. I have reached the limit of what public comment can do. I have the background in public utilities that is critical for the understanding of how you maintain the infrastructure. I've been on the Wastewater Advisory Board, I'm also on the Board of Light and Power. Marquette must maintain and increase its spending in these areas in order to maintain the infrastructure that's so critical for growth. Speaking of growth, my generation is often viewed as the one that wants to go back to the past. My profession is that of being a patent attorney, I work with inventors all the time, I am not allowed to sit in the past, I have to always write the future, and the future of Marquette will be a different area depending upon who sits on the City Commission. We've had a lot of planning going into the city, and the last ten years, we focused on developers and massive projects along the lake shore. We've pretty much run out of room on the lake shore for development, so we need to look elsewhere, and we need to use, other than the plan of $500,000 townhouses being the way to go. In terms of the budget, I'm happy to say I'm on Board of Light and Power this year. Not only did we have a balanced budget, but we were able to provide services without raising rates. So I've been in business and in private practice, I've always been responsible for the budget, and you simply cannot keep spending money that's not coming in, and these are difficult choices to make, but as I said, once the taxpayers know the cost of each want and desire, they tend to make better decisions. And in conclusion, I want to serve on the City Commission because I've watched things happen for the last six years, and I like to think that if my voice had been heard, that better things might have happened. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Hanley, you now have the floor for two minutes.
Thank you. I first want to thank you guys again for hosting this wonderful forum. Legal Women Voters is invaluable to the area, and we really appreciate this every year, in you allowing people in the city to see the candidates that are put forth. I hope that I have the support of the community to continue to serve for another three-year term. I have spent the last three years learning the city, or at least trying to, and working with city staff, and I would love to continue to do just that. The one thing that I've learned the most is that the biggest part of our job is reaching out to our community members, and so if anything wasn't answered here, or if you have a question that you would like more clarification on, I know that I speak for myself, and I assume I speak for all the other candidates in saying, "Reach out to us. We love to tell you why we see an issue a certain way, and it's part of our job and why we do it." So I am always willing to sit and talk to someone, and I encourage anyone who has questions, comments, or concerns to reach out to us or the commissioners currently so that they can get those questions answered. I enjoy what I do as a city commissioner. I'm also the executive director of the Children's Museum, and I enjoy that as well, but I really would love to continue one more three-year term so I can see the city through this budget issue, and hopefully see it come out the other end where we're having wonderful for the next commissioners, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Mitch Reynolds, you're going to have the floor for two minutes.
So I've lived in the city of Marquette for the last twenty years, and the first time I got involved in Marquette city politics is I applied to be on the Housing Commission, and that was at a time that my daughter was actually living in public housing in, in the Pioneer Apartments. And I've said this from day one, the reason that I want to be on the City Commission, the reason I want to be involved is because I want my little one to be able to live here if she wants to. I remember Commissioner Stonehouse said one of the coolest things to me one time, and it was that we ship out our rocks and our kids, and I would really like to be able to keep more of our kids here than grow up here. And I think by maintaining relationships with making Marquette the place that our children want to continue to live is what my number one goal would be. My other favorite part, I've been asked this question before, and what are, like, the favorite things you've ever done? One is have my kid. Two is being the city commissioner. And the reason is because I love talking to people, I love problem solving. I loved having people reach out to me when I was a commissioner and be able to solve their problem. One of my favorites is, I was going through my phone contacts the other day and just deleting old contacts, and there's a lady in my phone called Chicken Eileen, and for three years, she wanted chickens when I was on the City Commission, and eventually we got her chickens on the City Commission. But it was things like that where I would take something that somebody really wanted, and if it was a reasonable request and we could get it done, we would get it done. And that is something I loved about the City Commission, and I'd like to continue to do that, and I hope that you all vote for me and allow me to assist you with Marquette still being what it is.
Thank you. Candidate Mayor, you now have the floor for two minutes.
Thank you. You know, we've put in a lot of work and a lot of effort over the last three years since I've been on the commission, and, you know, I very strongly, very passionately feel for all the work that we're doing, and I just, at this point, I want to see that work through, and I don't want to leave in the middle of trying to really set our city up on the right path and leading us in a better situation than when I was first elected. And I'm grateful, the fact that the voters elected me once, and I'm hoping that they will do so again, so that I can continue the work that we're so that I can continue the work that we're trying to do for our community. I would like to mention on the accessibility point that, you know, my personal cell phone number is right on the city website, it has been the last three years. Feel free to re-joke me whenever you'd like. I really do try to be accessible. I don't make posts as often as I'd like on the social media, but I'm also pretty busy. As far as my background goes, you know, I'm the current mayor of the city of Marquette. My full-time job, I'm a personal banker and certified lender. I've been a member of the Michigan Army National Guard now for nine years. You know, I was a student body president at AMU and I graduated with a degree in public administration and economics. And I really just again want my daughter to be able to grow up in a community like the one I fell in love with. I want my residents to have that same ability. So, thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our candidate forum for the Marquette City Commission. Please thank the candidates for their participation. I believe I'd like to thank Marquette West Rotary Club for their help with funding for this forum and many thanks to the wonderful Cowfords staff for their help and support with setup and organizing this event. For further information on the upcoming general election and the candidates, go to our online voter guide at vote411.org. Marquette is a pilot city this year for early voting, which will go into effect statewide in 2024. So if you are a registered voter anywhere within the city of Marquette, you can vote early at Peter White Library from Thursday, November 2nd through Sunday, November 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And however you do it, remember to get out or mail in your vote for the November 7th election. We of the Legal Women Voters of Marquette County would like to remind the audience here and at home that if you found this forum informative and that you believe that democracy is not just a spectator's court, we urge you to join us. The Legal Women Voters is open to new members and is committed to having a diverse membership. Anyone 16 or older of any gender can join, participate in activities, and take on a leadership role. Thank you so much and good evening.